I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order. First order of business is the meeting agenda, I believe, stands as published. I'd like to hear a motion to accept Art's meeting, meeting notes?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And, highlight of the evening, I would like to schedule a special meeting for July 7th at 6:30. We're going to have a few rollovers from tonight that I'd like you to be able to address that night. So, I've sort of spoken to you and I think you all can make it. So, what I, and what we will do is we will develop that agenda as we go on tonight. So by the conclusion of tonight's meeting, we will know what the agenda for that meeting will be. Could I have a motion to meet on July 7th at 6:30?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
My wife.
The clerk for the planning board is absolutely thrilled. Our first public hearing is in a few minutes. I'd like to announce that the town board has hired a zoning enforcement officer for the town of Rhinebeck. It is Ryan Evangelista, who you, we've worked with for years. He was with Morris for many years. He has functioned as a zoning enforcement officer in the town of Goshen and in the town of Beekman. So he knows how to do it and he's fairly familiar with our zoning laws, quite familiar as anyone can be with our zoning law. And I will be meeting with him tomorrow to give him all the bad news and he'll be starting on Tuesday. So, I think he's a terrific hire for the town. I think he'll do a terrific job for us.
So you're going to resign?
The town board said after the last experience, maybe I shouldn't. So, I will be-
They just put him on vacation.
Yeah, right. No more pay, no more rage for him.
Right, I'll be in the bullpen, called in when, you know. So that's, I think we're very lucky to have Ryan. I think he'll do a great job for us. Does anyone else have any other announcements, comments? Anything else? Can we just sit here in silence for-
Anything you can do on the ZBA referral?
We can discuss the two ZBA. We have two ZBA referrals for area variances. And I think that the situation is, both of them are type 1 actions for Mr. Duffy and for Carolyn Blackwood. We're not going to be in a position tonight to complete the SEACER process, so aren't, do we need to complete the SEACER process just to make recommendations? They're not taking an action. We're just, it's just a recommendation. Was it envisioned by the town board when they put this provision in that we would not necessarily have completed the SEACER process within the 30 days after referral from the ZBA?
Well, I think the planning board's position to date has been in making a recommendation to the ZBA to include the planning board's position as to whether or not there are any planning or environmental issues involved with respect to the applications before the ZBA. In a matter of type 1 action where coordinated review is being conducted by the planning board, it seems that it might be premature for the planning board to make a recommendation to the ZBA without having first adopted a SEACER position, including consideration of the coastal policies.
Okay.
That's the, you know, that's kind of the quandary. On the other hand, we've clearly recognized that under coordinated review, the ZBA cannot act until the planning board as lead agency has completed SEACER compliance. Ergo, I think that's the reason for your scheduling of the July 7th special meeting.
Well, it is. We will complete SEACER and the coastal assessment and everything on our July 7th meeting, at which point we could then make a recommendation to the ZBA, since they can't act until we do that anyway. So we would still be in a timely manner to make a recommendation to them on both of those issues.
Now, with respect to my meeting notes, to the degree that that's a comment on my part and Michael's follow-up, departs from what it says in the, and may say in my meeting notes, I think it's consistent with the position with respect to Blackwood, which is not on the agenda this evening, except in the matter of the referral. With respect to Duffy, I felt that the board might be in a position tonight to consider a SEACER determination, completion of part 2 SEACER determination and coastal consistency determination. You've informed me that the CAB and its WAC role has asked for additional time to make its report to the planning board concerning coastal policies. And that then would, assuming you honor that particular request, that concludes your opportunity to issue that statement of consistency this evening.
But we can do that on the 7th.
But you could do it on the 7th-
And wrap that all up.
-by requesting that the CAB's report or the WAC's report be received by the 7th. And I think that is unarguably beyond the 30-day period that they would have under the, under Town Code Section 18.
I know Ryan's out here. So you're going to get that to us by the 7th? Yes?
Could I just ask that if it's being adjourned until the 7th, would it be possible for Ryan and the CAB to get their comments in 24 hours before that or by the morning so that the applicant has an opportunity to see them, to appreciate the CAB's actions today and letting us know comments as soon as possible? But if we could have them one business day in advance, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure. So in other words, if we could have them by the 4th or the 3rd of July, since the 4th is Friday and then Saturday, Sunday, so you have them-
That would be great.
So what do you say, Ryan?
Sure, I'll have to check in with the other man of the board on all the facts.
Okay, and I'll get back, I'll get back to you by then too. Okay, thank you.
You'll, you'll also see based upon another action that I contemplate the board taking this evening at conclusion of wherever we go with the public hearing, that I'm going to need that information too before the 7th.
Yes, right.
Because, well, to indicate what that action might be, I'm anticipating that I will be directed this evening to prepare the draft of a SEACER determination and consistency statement for the board's consideration on the 7th.
Okay, and as luck would have it, we are, we're ready for our first public hearing. And that would be, Robert Duffy, 195 and 31 Carmel, 195 River Road, 31 Carmel Drive, subdivision plat, lot consolidation, special use permits, wetlands permit and site plan. Conduct of, conduct of my public hearing on applications for special use permits and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning. Application for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land and application for wetlands permit under Town Code Chapter 120. Wetlands in the matter of proposed single-family residential development of consolidated 44.096 acre parcels with site landscaping improvements, guest accommodations, including two guest cottages and one detached accessory dwelling and other accessory structures in historic preservation zoning district, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, the Estates District's scenic area of statewide significance, and the town of Rhinebeck Local Waterfront Revitalization Area, being a type 1 action under SEACER and a matter pending applications for area variance before the ZBA. And I think what we're going to get tonight is just a final wrap-up overview of the applications that are before the planning board.
Just the changes.
Any changes, just the final, this is, this is what we have.
Let's get in the record first that the legal notice requirement has been met for this particular date.
Yes.
That has been-
That's filed with the-
Thank you.
So, good evening.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'm just going to go through two, two sections of things. One is some, some items that were submitted to you last week, which aren't necessarily new items, they're just more analysis of existing items on the project. As a quick, prior to that, as a quick overview of the plan, you know, since last month when we met, as you recall, the plans in general have been downsized. Barn 2 has been reduced in size, and this was done some time ago, from two stories to one story, from more than 2,000 square feet to less than 1,000 square feet. Both of the barns, this barn here, as well as this barn, have been facing fieldstone. The accessory guest quarters, two of which, one is here, one is here, have been reduced in scale. Also, barn 1, which is existing, which is this guy, if we go in closer, is, is the only accessory dwelling unit, and both of these have been converted, switched to guest cottages, meaning that there are no kitchens. Also, they're quite small in scale. The project in general has a net reduction in perviousness, in terms of the SWIP report at least, given the reduction of, the removal of the convent. The total square feet being constructed is 3,806, sorry, 3,086, of which 1,136 square feet is from the existing barn 1. So it's just a quick overview, as I sort of catch up. As, as, in regards to the items submitted last week, there's an archaeological phase 1 data relating to the relocated septic system. So as you recall, we did remove the septic system from this area, over to this area. And that promoted a requirement for an expanded archaeological phase 1, for the area that had not been tested over here. This work has been done and, and we did receive a short report, which was submitted to you last week, stating their, their recommendation that no, no further work be done. And they will, they will submit a full report for all of the work that's been done throughout the site, I believe in three to four weeks. That's to be determined, the exact date. The next item is the, the existing fire hydrant on the site. There's an existing hydrant basically right here. There's been some question and concern about the, the location and the access of that from the neighbor to the south in Astor Courts. And we've looked to, we've submitted, we've submitted basically a color key plan map and a memorandum. The memorandum summarizes the existing access by fire trucks. I'm going to just jump for a second. Step back. The key, the key point here is that the Duffy proposal does not change any access routes for the fire trucks or access to the fire hydrant in any way, from what is currently existing. We met with the fire chief for Rhine Cliff because we wanted to make sure that we, we were sort of in compliance and not creating any issues. This is, this is Rhine Cliff Drive, which is not on the property, but the, the fire chief physics explained that this is the preferred route for, for any fire trucks to enter the site because of the size of the trucks and the turn radiuses and the existing stone walls both here and the gate that's here. Both of these, the fire trucks can fit through, but the turning radius is very difficult actually here. But here, the fire trucks actually have said that they can't fit through that existing gate. So any access to either of these two properties would best be done through this, through this road, and then the, the trucks would sort of move through to a fire, to, to the space in general, as need be, any buildings here, and then to the fire hydrant here. If they needed to get to here, they, they could come through this way. They could also come through this way, and that, they do have the right to go through the property. The existing security gate, as we've mentioned before, does have access for the fire department to get in through a Knox box, which, which means basically that they're given a key. That key can open up this box and that box can open the, the gate. Also, in loss, in loss of emergency, the gate is open anyway, for both that, for both this security gate as well as this security gate. So, so in essence, I mean, point, point being that the access is still the same as it has been. So nothing really outside of the, the security gates, which, which do have access, have, have changed access to the existing fire hydrant, which is here.
Mr. Duffy, excuse me, but I think we may want to mention that Mr. Duffy is giving to the fire department both electronic access and key access. The fire chief has asked for both. I'm going to be here.
Oh, no, no, that's great. The, the next and last item here on my list is, is lighting. So there's also been a, a few just sort of, or one specific comment or request about lighting in this area. And this is not new lighting, this is the same lighting that's been on the plans the whole time, so it's just an analysis. I'm just going to read this. Some of the lighting details are- All right. Okay. All of the proposed lighting on the Duffy property is, is downlighting, with the exception of six small directional lights on the walkway leading from the courtyard to the pool. So that's in this area here. The, the specification sheet that's, that we're submitted to, to you with this package last week, gives detailed information on the fixture that's being referred to. These small fixtures will be directed at the Coosa Dogwood trees that line both sides of this walkway. They have a 20-watt MR16 bulb with a light intensity of 180 lumens per fixture. And just a quick comparison, a 60-watt light bulb is 855 lumens. So this, this fixture, these fixtures again are 180 lumens, much less than 855. Additionally, these lights are shielded by a small hood, preventing them from scattering any light beyond the trees. The shielding far surpasses the requirements of the Town Code, which only requires shielding of light sources over 2,000 lumens. So again, 180 lumens. We believe that these six small lights fall within the provisions of Section 125-56.F4. In other words, that they are landscape design element and integral to the aesthetic value of the design. The planning board does have the authority under 125-56.F4 to accept these lights as such a landscaping design element, and we ask that you do so as part of your site plan review. Such lighting is exempt from the requirements of the lighting regulations and is not prohibited uplighting. We've also done a sort of quick photometric analysis, because we do want to understand that if there is any light trespass, what, what that is or would be. So this is a little difficult to read on a screen. The best way to really read it is on the 24 by 36 originals. But basically, all of these little numbers show the light, the light spillage from any of the lights coming from this area.
Oh, wow.
So basically, all of the numbers below this area are zero. So, and the light spillage, by the way, is, is, is measured in foot candles, which is essentially lumens per square feet. So again, coming back to lumens, if you have 855 lumens, that's a 60-watt incandescent light. So, so I think that the point of this, and this exercise was helpful for us, but it shows essentially that the light spillage is very small. Even the numbers within this area are looking at .1 and .2 lumens per square foot, and then again down to zero after this. So all of the lighting in this area, the landscaping lighting, is quite, quite small in wattage and lumens. That's essentially it for, for sort of my portion. I do want to turn this over to Jim Bates, who is our ecological analysis, just to briefly describe any environmental analysis that's been done for the project.
Before you go, I have a question for you. You said that you relocated the septic system and you took out the old one.
Correct.
Did you abandon it or take it out?
I took it out, we took it out of the plans.
Okay, I'm concerned about digging it out of the ground.
No, no, so, so let me-
Okay, I'm just worried if you clear your words up, that's all.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, yes.
Okay, you abandoned the old one and built a new one, basically?
No.
No?
No.
That would be good.
Oh, okay.
We abandoned the proposed.
Okay. All right, I understand, thank you.
Archaeology, okay, that, that we can ask for.
Hello, my name is Jim Bates. My company is Ecological Analysis. I'm a wetlands and environmental and ecological consultant. I was hired to, on basically on the town's request, to find out if there was any situations on the property, including with the DEC. Upon doing that, I delineated the wetlands, both the DEC and the Army Corps wetlands on the property. I had the DEC come out and visit the site. They looked at not only the boundary of the DEC wetland, but in the areas that the trees were cut, to see if there was any issues. I believe you got a report back from the DEC that stated that they were fine with that. I had, I was also in conversations with DEC's wildlife people on the endangered species for the site, because that was a potential current concern of the board. There is an eagle, but it's at the top of the cove, and it's over 2,000 feet from where there was any activity, let alone any continued activity. It's also out of the eagle's sightline, so DEC was once, you know, also not concerned about that. The Indiana bats, they, because the populations are so low, they would prefer the trees been cut during the proper time window. However, they don't believe that there was any Indiana bats concern, because these were more healthy trees, as far as that's concerned. Bats like snacks and things like that, so that wasn't an issue. I went and also looked at some of the other habitat concerns on the property, including the upper areas there, and some of the other portions of the property, and found that there really isn't a lot of habitat on this property, and it's due to the manipulation of the property over its lifetimes. There's debris and things like that, which the construction companies were like, oh, we've got more stuff than we've got to carry out of here that's garbage. And there was a few wet spots here and there, but they take water from, basically from the roadway, and they don't hold water long enough for them to have any vertebrate, you know, abilities. There is the one area above the bridge down there, there is a pipe that goes underneath there that's plugged with leaves. So though it does hold water, it doesn't hold water on any regular cycle, because it builds up and flushes out, but based on pressure. And when the water goes, so, so there's no really good habitat there as well. The area down below was fragmites, and then the stream was basically catching effluent from the adjoining property. So, that was pretty much the determination and DEC habitat, and I pretty much agree that this site's been manipulated so much that there's not a lot of good habitat that could be there. And that's kind of the conclusions I have, unless the board has any questions or something from them.
Hearing none. Thank you.
So that concludes our presentation. Again, we're happy to answer any questions, but we have presented April, May, earlier this month and tonight, and the conclusions that these applications together with all the documents that have been submitted, provide all the information needed to make a decision.
Okay. Well, the one question I had, we did have a site visit of Melly and I and Ryan Dowden a week and a half ago, Monday, met with you all out there. We discussed the different buffers, things like that, some discussion, and there was some discussion of enhancing some of the buffer areas that had been, the screening areas you discussed. If you could just sort of go over the conclusions that we came to, that would probably be helpful, because I know that's been one of the big concerns. We were discussing the type of plants, mixed plantings, deciduous and evergreen, particularly along the area to preserve the view shed, that basically goes down through that open meadow, which is just to the east of Mr. Duffy's property line.
We're talking about-
Yeah, right down in there. And we were discussing the plantings along that area to the west-
Right.
-that would screen Mr. Duffy's property from, from the neighbor.
Is, is, so just to quickly explain what-
Right.
-we talked about. So, in, in the plans already are six new trees here, these light green trees, and six new trees here as well. Also, already in the plans are noted 30, I'm going to, I'm going to trip over this one, vibriniums?
Hybernum.
Thank you. All, all throughout the area, right? So the, the idea with those is, with, with the existing trees that have been sort of deer damaged, as well as to enhance the screening in general, those will be planted throughout this area. We did discuss that those plants should not obviously, well, not obviously, those plants should not be in a straight line, they should be sort of scattered and they should be sort of mixed, so that they look a little bit more natural. But again, those have been part of, part of the plans, at least, since the May 5th submission, and-
And then we were also discussing that trying to mix the evergreens, there was discussion of just using white pine, I think there was a discussion of trying to mix pine and spruce, so that we have some diversity in there.
Exactly. So the, the existing plans actually do have quite a bit of diversity within these 12 trees. Only two of them have been, since May 12th, noted as white pine.
Okay.
So there is a bit of diversity already within those. And that diversity sort of, it, as we've explained before, it also, it pulls from what's existing, it also pulls from what was historically used from the site, and there's a balance, you know, between what makes sense now, what was used in the past, and what is currently still on the, on the site.
And there was a possibility of including possibly a couple of deciduous oak or maple or something like that in there, just to break up?
Yes. And absolutely, that can be added in several deciduous, that, that has not been done, but we can definitely do that, yeah.
That's, and I think that we, when we did the site visit, we had the whole crew there. We were able to go over both the ecological issues, the wetland issues, the habitat issues, the planting issues, like Michael was there, Michael Trump was there. And I know that I was, you know, quite, quite pleased with what I heard, what I saw. We did survey the hillside where the cutting had taken place. The only apparent erosion had taken place from areas which the previous owner had done some work there and had washed out certain areas. Nothing more has washed out that I can tell. The stumps are still in there holding soil, the plantings that have gone in appear to be surviving very nicely. It's, it appears that the hillside has been stabilized, that that's not a problem at this point in time. What else? Nothing else?
Just the-
Yeah. Oh, yes. I have a note here. Would it be possible to get the archaeological report before we, so we have that in hand for, or do we already have it?
The, the short form was sent to you last week. The full report will be completed in three weeks. The full report covers everything that was done throughout the entire site, but the short report that was done for the area with, with the revised septic area was submitted to you last week.
Do we have a, so we have a summary of the first work that was done and a summary of the second work?
Yes, the summary, the summary from, from all of the work, except for this, was submitted on May, on the May 5th, so it should be in the binder.
Yes, so there's new information, it's this new report of the relocated septic. And you do have a short report, which states the conclusions now, that they're putting it together in their comprehensive report.
Okay.
Obviously, we'll do our best to get it to you, but I think you have reports on-
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that. We just wanted to make sure we had everything before the 7th.
Sure.
And I guess I would note that the State Office of Parks and Recreation had no archaeological concerns. We did, but they didn't, so. We appreciate the work that was done.
Of course.
Members of the planning board, questions?
Public.
All right.
No, public.
Oh, public. Yeah. Yes.
Hi, I'm Jeff Romano, resident of town of Rhinebeck and the former chair of the Conservation Advisory Board. And I will submit my comments to Joan, and I'll just summarize some of the, the comments for you. I do have questions about the DEC report, and I'll get to that later. So I wanted to put into context why this project needs the scrutiny that, you know, we've asked for by the planning board. So I'm just going to read quickly from the LWRP, which is kind of like the master plan for this district. It says in summary, "The collection of large estates set in designed landscapes, many undisturbed natural features and significant public historic sites render the Estates District unique in the Hudson River coastal area, the state and the nation. The beauty of the region's landscape, including views of the Hudson and the distant Castle Mountains, have been celebrated for generations, most notably in the paintings of the Hudson River School, the first indigenous art movement in the United States. The district represents designed landscapes, which spawned the American landscape movement that subsequently spread across the country and remain, as does the work of renowned architects, some who were ingenious innovators in the architectural history of the nation, such as Stanford White of Astor Courts. Their work have earned for a majority of the Estates District a National Historic District designation. The Teahouse property and Astor Court property are cornerstones of the district." There's been a lot of talk about view shed protections, and there are two definitions of view sheds that I think are very important to consider. The two types are, one, panoramic views, generally including fields or lawns, the Hudson River and its western shorelines. And two, the intimate views of a pastoral or forested nature. If care were not taken to cluster and orient structures to retain these views, discordant features would be introduced into the views, reducing their scenic quality and impairing the scenic quality of the Estates District. Sighting of structures in lawn areas, as in the pool pavilion and barn 01, would alter the composition of the views, reduce open space, and in some cases, block views in the Estates District, a significant component of the scenic quality. I have a brief statement about the landscape plan. The current landscape plan, not yet complete, fails to provide adequate four-season screening of buildings, new and existing roadways, and the protection of historic view sheds. For example, the pool and pool house would be clearly visible from the Astor Courts field- field and driveway without significant screening. Moreover, the landscape plan requires further study given its lack of clarity as to what landscaping currently exists and what will be added, as well as the nature of the proposed plantings and trees, many of which are neither deer resistant nor capable of providing adequate screening. This is not just an adjoining neighbor concern, but a concern of the community as a whole. If there is no protection built into this project for river views, the iconic historic landscape, and that is a very important point, the iconic historic landscape, it's not just the river views, or the concentration of density in such a purportedly protected area, this could easily serve as a dangerous precedent for future development of river properties. This board is currently considering the Blackwood proposal on River Road and Rhine Cliff, and we're asking how is the level of intrusion proposed by the Duffy application different from that proposal's impacts in the same district? For some questions about the damage that were done to the slope, there was significant damage done to the slope along the Hudson, and a mitigation plan is being discussed. Habitat protection is recognized as fundamental to assuring the survival of fish and wildlife populations. Certain habitats are critical to the maintenance of a given population and therefore merit special protection. Such habitats, such as Aster Cove, exhibit one or more of the following characteristics: are essential to the survival of a large portion of particular fish or wildlife population, e.g. feeding grounds and nursery areas, which Aster Cove is; support populations of rare and endangered species, which Aster Cove does; are found at a very low frequency within a coastal region; and support fish and wildlife populations having significant commercial or recreational value, and would be difficult or impossible to replace. So Aster Cove is such a habitat, and I'm asking that an independent habitat assessment is essential, and the organization best qualified to render the report is Hudsonia, whom the town has relied on for many years. I have questions too about procedures in relation to Barn 01. Barn 01 was put up probably almost a year ago. When it was put up, there was no special use permit or planning board site plan approval for the shed barn, which is now referred to as Barn 01 in the application. The shed barn also has no certificate of occupancy or certificate of compliance. These issues predate the application and should be resolved before the current application is considered. Most of the screening, or not most, at least half of the screening, is to screen the barn shed that was put up without these special use permit and site plan approval. When it was first proposed, it was proposed as a shed barn, so, as a storage shed. So if it had gone through normal site plan approval, I would guess that it would not be placed in the front of the house, because that would have created a variance. A shed barn doesn't belong in front of a house, and the shed barn probably would have ended up down where the little run-in shed is, which is currently a storage shed. So to consider this now an existing building, I think, is flawed, and to then have to do extensive landscaping to hide this building, to me, doesn't make any sense. The building didn't belong there in the first place. I also have some questions about the procedures of the lot consolidation. And the application states that the lots are consolidates, consolidated. So I'd ask the board to please explain how the consolidation is being processed, permitted, and noticed, and do any agencies such as Dutchess County Planning or any other agencies need to comment on the consolidation. I have a lot more comments, but I'd like to reserve some time for the rest, people who might want to speak. I'll put all these comments into the record, I'll send them to Joan.
Thank you.
Are they on the way submitted tonight?
Yes.
Are we getting copies?
And we can get copies for you--
Yep.
--tonight. Ryan?
Good evening, board, Mr. Chairman, Ryan Doughton, CAB Chair. Besides our comments that we put in, the board had some questions about the coastal assessment form. When we looked through the plans, we saw that there was a supplemental coastal assessment form for the new submission. We were just wondering if, per the law, if they should submit a new coastal assessment form, because the plans have changed. I saw the original one was back in February, I believe it was February 13th, 2014, and it seems that the supplemental one with the documents dated May 2014 is a supplemental coastal form. So I don't know if the board wishes a new one to be submitted, or--
No.
Because it just seemed a little cut and paste.
As long as the information is provided, it doesn't need to have a new form anymore. We're not asking for a new application from the applicant. As we go through the public hearing process, as we go through the review process, changes are made to the application as it's presented. And we do go forward, which is why we've also requested an extra time to schedule a special meeting of this board, so the CAB, WAC can use that supplemental information, that additional information, to do its consistency review.
Okay, it's just, in the supplemental coastal review form, it references certain parts, and it seems very, I don't know, scattered. It doesn't seem to what the form originally that we have printed out and use, it just seems very cut and paste.
If there's, if there are issues which you don't have information that you feel you need, bring that, bring that considered concern to me, and I'll see if I can't find that for you.
Okay. Thank you, board.
In reference to the earlier comments that we heard tonight, a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, the consolidation of the lots is what the subdivision, the subdivision application is for, lot consolidation. Basically, what's happening is a lot which had a building on it and infrastructure on it has now been turned into a lawn. It is being attached to the existing property. I find absolutely no environmental issues with that or problems with that whatsoever. As far as the hillside is concerned, I have gone there a number of times. I have viewed what is going on there. The hillside has not moved. The steps that have been taken to stabilize it have apparently been effective. I see no problem with that. I know other areas along the river have also been cleared by other residents for reasons which I think are justified, and at the same time, those areas also seem to be stable as well. A number, as far as the habitat study is concerned, we have DEC sign off on that. I see absolutely no reason whatsoever to require any further study of this site. Where the building is going on on this site is the former site of where I believe the main house was. There were other infrastructure buildings there. I think John Jacob Astor built the original, I thought it was John Jacob, whoever, I think it was, 1850, something like that. The site has been disturbed for about, what, the last 170 years. It is not a virgin site. It is not a site that anyone has any idea what the initial habitat was back at that time. It's my opinion that the applicant in this case has given us every bit of information we've asked for. The state said they didn't want archeology. We did, we've got it. They've even gone to Phase 3 in terms of recovery of material. They have gone to DEC and asked DEC to come to the site to review both wetland delineations, what's going on in the wetlands, to look at the site where the trees were taken down, and they have no habitat issues with that. Our engineer has signed off on both the SWIP and the sewage disposal plans for this site. Frankly, I certainly come to a certain point where I feel that there's so much you can ask of a private residence. This is not a public procedure, it's not a commercial property, this is a private residence. I believe that what the applicant is doing is on this 44, whatever acre property it's going to be, the construction that's taking place is taking place where it has been traditionally structures. The glass guest house is going to be where an existing shed is. The pool pavilion and the pool is basically, I believe, in the area where the mansion was at one time. And the building that was built, that Barn 01, was indeed done without special use permit site plan, because the CEO at the time said it wasn't necessary. A building permit was gotten for that, and they have spoken with the building inspector. They can always extend the term of the building permit. There is no violation on the property, there is no reason why the review of this property cannot go forward. And I think there comes to a point where I hope that in the next two weeks, any additional issues or discomfort can be addressed, and I certainly hope to do that. Any help I can be to do that, I'm more than happy to do, between people having some questions. But I do think you come to a point where what you have asked for, and it has been granted, is indeed sufficient. Some of the comments that have been made, I do not believe are valid. I do not believe they're justified. I do not believe they're based upon what is actually happening on this site or what the applicant is proposing to do. So having had my say, anything else from the public?
Comment from the consultant?
Yes, Kathy.
This one procedural item.
I'm sorry?
As Kathy is coming up, Michael did not indicate, did not cover one of the procedural items that was raised. Applications for subdivision plat approval are not referable and reviewable by Dutchess County Planning. Only zoning-related actions, such as special permits, site plans, and those matters were referred to county planning.
My name is Kathy Hammer. I live at Astor Courts, usually referred to as the neighbor with regard to this project. I think you all will agree that the entity and the place that is most impacted by what is happening on this property is Astor Courts. Is that a fair remark?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. There is much in what is presented this evening, even though Mr. Jake Litz, Jake Litz, right, indicates that it's all, you know, old business. It is not. There are issues in this, which we just saw Tuesday. We've not been a party to almost anything of the dialogue between the town and this applicant, and usually, when these things come in, we see them when they're being presented. This particular set of documents, the documents dated June the 9th and the documents dated June 20th, I saw on Tuesday. Sorry, let me take it back. June 9th, I did see when I came back from Europe. So, you know, we never seem to know until somebody stands up and discusses it, or until you have a dialogue with them. I have no idea what was going on about the landscaping, no idea about the lighting and whatever, in spite of the fact that we have expressed concerns, deep concerns, and we continue to express them. So I would like to ask two things. I've outlined stuff in here. I would like a site visit with those people who seem to be, you know, doing the landscape work and indicating how it'll be positioned and the type and so forth, because much of what is in there is different or new or additional to what had been discussed the last time I was at the planning board meeting. So I'd like that. I don't care who goes, or if anybody will let me on the property, I would like to do that. I'd also like you to read this letter, much of which Jeff Romano has discussed, and understand, please, what our basic concerns have been from the beginning. I've had one conversation, to be fair, with Mr. Jake Litz, one, two months ago, three months ago, expressing what our true concerns were. I don't believe that those concerns have been addressed in ways that at least we can understand, if not be satisfied with. So I would like you, in the next limited period of time, to please allow us some kind of dialogue to the process that has been going on without our really being a party to it. And this is the--
Okay, thank you. I think the question of a site visit is really up to the applicant.
I have a question about-- I think that there should be a law for this site visit, if that's something we can get done.
Okay. I'd be happy to participate in that, schedule that. You know, we have two weeks.
Do we necessarily have to be, as a board, involved at all? It's between--
We don't have to, but I have, I have offered to involve myself. I'm not going to CEO anymore, so I have some free time. So I would be happy to do that. And then--
Do I coordinate that?
Do you want to do it through me? And I will do it?
That makes sense.
Okay. I'll get some times and dates that are convenient, and we'll set that up.
I want to get to the end of this meeting, because you only--
Yeah.
--you're less than two weeks.
Right. Yeah, I'm gonna be out of town for a few days, and I'm not gonna say where. But other than that, definitely, when we conclude this, we'll see if we don't have some times and dates that it's convenient, because we do have everyone here now, so that might be the most convenient way to do it. We can just sort of maybe, we'll take a break for a few minutes and just step outside, if that's convenient. Okay?
And again, we want to have any dialogue that we leave this matter forward, but we want to say for the record that every single application that was filed here was sent to the county for Astor Courts, including the poll blinders that this board received, every application to the planning board and to the zoning board. And the only application which was not sent to Mr. Cantor was one that was filed after he informed me that he no longer represented Astor Courts.
Okay.
I did not know until I picked up on a voicemail on my way up here tonight, the name of the successor council. So I think that this applicant has done everything possible to fully advise the neighbor of everything in its application. It has dialogued with Mr. Romano, who is a consultant in the team at Astor Courts, who is so identified, and tried in every way to further a dialogue to come to some reasonable solution there. So we are willing to go the next mile and to try to resolve this, but I think it should be known that copies of everything we filed with this board were sent, info binders the same day they were filed.
Thank you.
And may I speak to that?
Sure.
We did not receive the June 9th package, nor did we receive the June 20th, which came in to the town by Federal Express on Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday. I got it on Tuesday. Those are the two to which I was referring, number one. Number two, let me just say one thing, because I know Mr. Broad and Mr. Trimble raised this with us this afternoon. Why now, in terms of our offering concerns, letters, whatever? Why have we waited until now? One reason is, I believe, Ms. Ventile, that this application has shifted in pretty significant ways over the period of time that you guys have been working on it, number one. So it's always been very difficult, including tonight's presentation, to sort of get a handle on exactly where it was going to be the next time that they came. So that was one thing. The second thing is, she refers to our prior counsel. I think he and I both hoped that we would be able to work together to come to some resolution of the sets of concerns and issues that were problematic for us. That didn't happen. And so tonight would be my first opportunity to at least raise these issues and ask for a voice in the dialogue. That's all I'm asking for. If you and I and Mr. Cantor, I mean, Mr. Eric Charlton can resolve this, it would be great. It would, it's exactly what you and I talked about months ago. That's really what we want, is to come to some kind of conclusion that makes sense for everybody in the mix.
And that's what--
So I think we're all--
We'll give it a shot.
--the same--
Exactly.
--the same solution.
Great. And so to the extent that you can facilitate that, I would--
I will do that. Did you have your hand up, sir? Would you care to be recognized and speak?
I'll be brief. For the record, my name is Mark Vermitzke. I'm a consulting engineer at Lancerver, and I was retained by Astor Courts to review the Duffy application on their behalf. And I did review several aspects of it, and one of the major concerns that Astor Courts had with this particular application related to view shed and, you know, visibility of proposed improvements on the Duffy property from the Astor Courts property. I have done some preliminary work with regard to developing some sightlines and view sheds Astor Courts to the proposed improvements, and I have suggested to Astor Courts that they meet with the representatives of Mr. Duffy in order to ensure that there's, you know, adequate screening to the improvements, you know, a couple of structures in particular, one, the building associated with the pool house, or with the pool, and that this may be best served with a field meeting and reviewing, you know, some, you know, nothing like taking a look on the site. I have some preliminary, as I said, preliminary view shed analysis plans that I can provide, but I would also like to have the ability to, you know, attend a meeting with, you know, representing Astor Courts to review that with-- a meeting with, you know, representing Astor Courts to review that with the applicant. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Well, we would welcome Mr. Verminski on a site visit, but we would ask that if he's identified preliminary additional view sheds that should be identified, we'd like to see them now. In fact, in my continuing dialogue with Mr. Cantor over these many weeks, we were expecting to see them some time ago. If you'll recall, the sightlines and view sheds that were originally done were done based on sightlines identified by Astor Co., I think we were, I'm sorry, by Astor Courts. We were initially cooperating to try to get sightlines to take in a leave-off condition, which we did, and those are the ones that we presented to you. And if there are additional ones, we can't get any leave-off at this time of year, but if there are other points of view, we would like to have them now, so that we can study them before a site visit.
I'll certainly provide that information to the board.
Thank you, Mark.
And forward it to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, once I start, you can't shut me up. Ms. Fantel, I want you to know that if you were in dialogue with Mr. Cantor, it was never reported to us. And so, I actually thought that there was no back and forth at all. And to, I'm happy to share with you. So, we get this out of the way, all of the emails from Mr. Cantor indicating basically that nobody would talk about anything. So, I'm going to share those with you, because I don't want you guys to think, okay, I'll share it with anybody who wants to read it. I understand you're a lawyer.
I have ethical obligations.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
Right. And we're going to.
As an attorney, but I guess maybe this is like an experience where me before the board, we're finally getting down to brass tacks.
Right, exactly. It's silly, isn't it? It's ridiculous.
And move forward.
We'll have a nice meeting, and we'll do it onsite.
Thank you.
And who's bringing the hot dogs in here?
We got Triscuits. No, it will not be. I won't be here. Any other comments from the public? Okay. What I'd like to ask, yes, sir.
Ask for credits, ask for comments from the board.
Comments from the boards. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to tell you, I support your commentary 100% on what was said by you relative to the latest documentation that just came in.
Thank you.
I want that on the public record.
What I'd like to ask the board for is a motion to continue this public hearing to July 7th at 6:30. And I would also, if I can roll into that, also ask Art to draft for that meeting, for our consideration, should we be in a position to do so, a draft, Part II and Part III for us to review at that time, a draft negative declaration, if that's appropriate, and a draft consistency resolution for us to consider. And this will be based upon both the meeting that we're going to be having, the discussions we're going to be having, any further information that we have, the CAB providing the consistency review. Is that fair, Art?
I have no problem at all with that directive from the board. The only thing I ask is that I be advised a day or so before the 7th of any progress that's made in the dialogue that occurs.
Absolutely.
And receive a copy of the CAB's report.
Yeah, we'll hopefully be meeting either later this week or early next week.
Right. I think that's great, and I appreciate Mark Verminski's cooperation also. I think we'll fully share information after all. We're all taking a hard look at the issues. And I think it's in everyone's interest to have as much conversation and meaningful dialogue as possible to try to reach a satisfactory solution. But if it comes to the point of documents needing to be prepared, I agree that Art Verminski's to have the latest information. And I would say, on behalf of the applicant, we would like to have.
Can't have it later than the.
Right.
It's got to be, it's got to be no later than.
Yeah, how, okay, very good.
Close of business Tuesday.
Could I hear a motion to that effect of?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
There isn't much time, is there?
I was just going to say, you really have to have things by the close of business on the 2nd.
Yes, because I'm going to be away from midday on the 3rd through the evening of the 6th.
That's it.
So, maybe we should do this for the 7th, and 7 is 14. Does that, is it possible for the board?
No, we don't meet again until the 21st. We meet on the 7th.
The special meeting, instead of the 7th, if you put on the 14th, we'd at least have that extra week.
Yeah, I just don't think we have enough time.
Yeah, that would take the, yeah.
Is the 14th work for everybody?
That would make sense.
That'd be good. Town board meeting?
We can meet downstairs.
Camera, kick them downstairs.
It does not have to be on, it does not have to be on a Monday.
Why can't we go downstairs?
We could go downstairs.
You'd get accessible.
Will this be the only thing on the agenda, I would imagine, correct?
There'll be this and maybe one other preliminary application that I know of. That's all I know of.
I think we could use downstairs.
We could do downstairs. And if we have to come up, then the town board will have to go down, because otherwise we'd be in trouble with ADA. So, could I hear a motion? Well, could I, okay, wait a minute. We already approved the first motion.
So, you have to.
Amend.
Amend. And that Art's going to write documents. Okay. Now, could I hear a motion to change the special meeting from July 7th at 6:30 to July 14th at 6:30, and to schedule the continuation of this public hearing at 6:35 on July 14th?
Wait, he's thinking. You have a problem?
I've got to play around with something else, but that'll work.
More fun than this?
Another business item.
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Going to meet on the 14th, 6:35. Is it okay for me to take like a brief recess and we'll just set up?
What you've got to do now, you just changed the date of the special meeting. You haven't changed the date of continuation of the public hearing.
Oh, I thought I did. I thought I rolled it all into one.
Rolled it all into one? Okay.
No clue.
The 14th is a problem. You need to do it.
It gets harder for us. It gets harder for us when we start switching days of the week.
Is it tough?
If you figure this way, everyone's pretty much.
I was originally going to suggest like Thursday, the 10th, or something like that, instead of the 7th.
Yeah. Well, since we have everyone here.
Take a five-minute break and schedule.
We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll schedule the site visit with who's going to join us. It's the 14th at 6:35, yes.
So, I can hit done on my calendar?
Yes.
Okay.
Until I change my mind again.
So, with that, we should try to encourage the CAB comments by.
The 7th.
By the 7th.
Right.
Or 7th or the 9th, certainly not later than Wednesday, the 9th.
Okay. Okay, yes, sir. Oh, wait a minute. Being a portion of a substantially greater acreage controlled by the applicant in the type of action under secret due to location with the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District. Yes.
You guys have any further questions?
You have to inform the public of what you're doing, and you're public on TV.
We are going to reuse two of the buildings that are on the former Holy Cross campus, add a connecting structure that will turn them into a stall barn and indoor riding arena. The area of disturbance for that site is limited to places where buildings had been in the past. And that's basically what's being proposed. It's a, it's, there's some construction and then the reuse of two existing buildings.
Okay. We had some questions. We were going over the plans. We had some questions. We hope, and we have the plans here for you to refer to. And I'm going to basically let Melody and Art raise those questions. Art, perhaps, because I was not paying attention.
Do you want our site plan report?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, right. Your site plan report first. Site plan report first.
Yes.
Start.
Okay. Melody and I went down. It's two big old, two big buildings, probably what, early 50s.
Yeah, mid-50s. The other, the fieldhouse is still late 80s.
And then the connecting building between it. The one question that I do have after I left was, and I did see it was addressed to in the CAB minutes, was the stall barn is there, the riding arena is there, but where is there a spot for the horses to go outside?
The turnout would be in the fields, areas adjacent to the.
Be happy to stand.
Michael, can you indicate where those would be on the site plan?
Yeah, I didn't realize that that would be part of what you were reviewing, because of the agricultural nature of those fields.
Yeah, we're pretty thorough.
Yeah. There's a road that used to continue down past those existing buildings and go over a bridge, over the pond. To the north side of that road is a large area of relatively flat ground that had been open in the past, and we will reopen and use for turnout. There's the area immediately behind the fieldhouse, or what will be the indoor, will be a reserved paddock area that will probably remain sand, so that we have a place for animals during inclement weather. And the area in front of, to the west of that building, behind the addition, will also be a small paddock area.
There was another question about parking. Given, we weren't sure how many stalls there were, so how many potential borders you might have, say you're, you know, totally booked up.
The, there's a lot of different ways the stalls could be used. There's, there are, so depending on whether we lease a portion or all of the barn to a single trainer, and that person is arriving and training most of the horses during the week, and their clients would come and ride once a week, the parking for that kind of situation is very limited. So, we propose to do a small parking area across that road that I just mentioned on the incoming driveway that's existing estate road.
Okay. That could also be added to the site plan, just so we see where it is.
Sure. Yeah. There's also a courtyard area that's created between the two buildings.
Right. That's supposed to be eventually paved.
That's the area. The only thing that's on the plan we have here, which is largely the, is that subject, or what does Art speak?
Yeah, there are two, yeah. There's a little site plan that's included in the engineer's drawings that principally relate with the SDS.
Right.
So, I guess, you know, you indicated that the project consists of the two existing buildings and the connecting link. Well, the project really consists of the two existing buildings, the link, and of course, the SDS installation, which is a shared, a matter of shared review by the planning board under site plan and the health department, of course. And there are pavement areas identified also on that site plan that I would assume a portion of this project, because they are no more future than the connecting link, which is also described on this as future building. That's part of the, so I would guess those paved areas that show on the site plan are part of the project initially.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we would pave them with blacktop. They are going to be.
Then the plan is misleading.
Yeah, I don't think it's our plan to do that with blacktop.
We just, is it going to be gravel? Is it going to be?
We have on the site, tailings from having removed, I don't know, 15, 20, maybe 30,000 square foot of parking that was paved and existing on the site. And we've been using that on roads. It works very well. So, that's probably what our material will be, that or some kind of item four.
So, on the side, you can just show where the parking areas you're proposing doing, and the material you're proposing or to use would be these, this material, the salvaged material.
The parking area is different than the pavement areas that are shown on this plan. Pavement areas are shown on this plan, I guess, are essentially the courtyard area and subcirculation around the building. And parking areas.
I think that's, that is a mistake that the engineer made to show it as pavement. I think that they indicated that because they were trying to figure out where to put their retention tank, and they marked it as pavement areas, so that they knew they couldn't put something under that. That's not our intention to pave, so I'm sorry that that's confusing.
And the parking area is apart from that. It's a different.
It's across the road.
Across the road, so that should be somehow identified.
If you can just show where the paddocks are going to be and where the parking's going to be, and just the material, that would be very helpful.
Okay. I'd be happy to show a basic outline of paddocks. That plan, I mean, I'll be as cooperative as I can, but I also don't want to be asked to do things that are not within the purvey of a site plan. If we're putting in paddocks on an ongoing basis, I don't think I need site plan approval for each of those.
No. But we just want to know where the horses are going to go when they leave the building. That's all.
Yeah. There's plenty of land that's already open for horse turnout.
Okay. Other comments from the site visit?
Well, not exactly from the, we did ask for you, when we were there, to indicate somewhere how the upper floor of the first building that you encounter will be used. We talked about it. You weren't sure if it was going to be equipment or hay. You said you would put a note on some.
Okay, I'm sorry I didn't do that. In thinking about that, does it matter, as long as it's within the agricultural use, whether that's indicated or not?
Well, structurally, I guess at one point it was possible equipment. Maybe machinery might be up there, just from a structural standpoint. It would be good to know, just because when I stamp and sign, I'm basically signing off that whatever's going here is going to be safe, is going to be okay. So, I'd like to just have an idea of what's going to go there.
Yeah, the building is built and rated for assembly, so anything that we put in there, in terms of a square foot value for that floor, it's so far above what any agricultural structure would be. I mean, there's, it's built to have an entire school of children standing and adults filling the space.
That is substantially lighter than an equipment loading.
If, well.
That is substantially lighter, a human occupancy is substantially lighter than an equipment or a hay loading would be.
My understanding is that assembly loading on a per-square-foot basis is one of the highest loadings you could do.
I'd like to see that documentation from your engineer.
Okay. At any rate, we did talk with Robert Murray about any of those potential uses, and he didn't see a problem with them. If you'd like for me to.
Yeah, if you could, just so that I know, when I do sign off on this, if there's a problem, they yell at Robert.
Michael, if the, if the planning board were not requiring it, the building department needs to, because in issuing his building permit, the building department is accepting a liability with respect to the safety of that particular building.
I understand that we would have to present.
And particularly in that we're talking about a loading that could be above a space that's occasionally occupied by humans.
Yeah, I understand. I thought that we would have to present that at the time when we were applying for the building permit to, for the certificate.
I think it's legitimate questions being asked by the board.
On the, when I'm looking at the floor finish plan, I think I'm understanding it, but I.
For which building are you looking?
Actually, it's for both of them.
Okay.
And I'm having trouble relating that to which are wash stalls, which are stalls, which are aisles. Can you help me understand that? Because I don't see anything in our packet here that says what are stalls, what are, where your wash stalls are.
These are wash racks. This is, this is all aisle area here.
Uh-huh.
These are stalls.
So, only, these four are the only wash stalls?
These are the wash racks here. There is a farrier stall.
Can we get this with that information on it? Which are farrier stalls, which are wash stalls?
Why, I mean, I'd be happy to give it to you, but I don't understand what it is.
It just helps me understand how it works.
What's the difference?
I don't know. My concern is that I don't really understand how it functions, I guess.
This is an aisle that runs through the whole barn. These are the wash racks. This is also an aisle, so that there's a means of egress here.
Is there a problem with just putting that in writing on this?
No.
Okay, good. That's all I'm asking for.
And at the same point in time, numbering the stalls. I think, I think we agreed it was 24, but I'm not really sure if that's the, that's the case. Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions from the board?
I just want to note that even though it is an ag district and it's an ag use, it still has to follow our zoning law. It still has to be, you know, Ag and Markets says, yes, you can do ag, but it still has to follow the local zoning law.
Yes.
Yep. Do you feel that it's not?
No, I just wanted to make that point, because like, we look at this plan and it, I mean, I couldn't figure, I couldn't even tell where on the property, the buildings, where I'm looking at this plan.
Well, the, they're located on the engineering's drawing, engineer's drawing of a, of a site, are they not?
There's a, yes, yes, there's, there is a key plan right here, that boundary plan.
But we didn't, we never got that.
And it's not, it's not labeled site plan, it's labeled the, actually, the health department's subject.
And we didn't, we never got that.
Oh, I submitted, I submitted, I think I was asked to submit three copies to the board.
That may well be.
And they, I did.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to be as helpful as I need to be. I, I'm wary of being asked to do things that, that I don't have to.
We're not going to ask you to do that.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
We only ask what you have to do.
Good.
Other questions?
Ryan. Good evening again, Board, Ryan Dowden, Conservation Advisory Board. I was also present, along with Gary Kenton, with Malady Moore and Sharon Sherrod, at that site visit, June 12th, at 8:30 in the morning. We just have some main concerns, it's nothing too specific. We were sort of concerned, we know the arena has its own drainage system, but our concerns deal with the stable and the building connecting the stable and arena. And just thinking of soils, ag soils, things like that, and best practices, we were, our advisement would be to see if the applicant would be interested in potential rain gardens or rain barrels, something to capture the rain coming off the roofs, which are significantly high. The buildings are quite high off the ground, and, and we felt that potentially some of that water could, could be captured, instead of it just coming off the roof and washing down to the lower areas of the property, and if, rain gardens, rain barrels, or any other methods to capture the runoff. And the paperwork from Dutchess County Health Department concerning the SDS, has that been submitted yet? Have they gotten back to the town on that?
I have not received the final approval from the day of site visit, and I assume it's in their works. And so they, they could be in no further concern or questions about it. I do know that the engineer, the chair of the SDS, had to leave town for several weeks, because they definitely, so there may be some delay in her actually giving a response to us, but I assume it's pending.
The application, and certainly, the application has in fact been submitted to the health department. It's pending at the health department, and copies of the, well, copies of the submission made to the health department have been presented to the planning board, one of which is right here.
With regards to the, to the roofs, the buildings in the past were governed, the intent to regovern them, and there's a system in place for the existing buildings to collect and dispose of that water, sort of a big system to manage it, so that it's not disperging on the surface. We just haven't tied into that, and we didn't want to put the government back in until we had the construction of the vision.
Sure, okay.
So that is part of the construction plan.
All right. Because we, we didn't have anything on the plan, so we, we just wanted to make sure, you know, not too much runoff was heading anywhere. In the EAF Part 1, it was checked off that liquid waste would be generated, but it wasn't explained the nature of the liquid waste. I don't know.
I checked that because there is going to be a sewage, you know, a drainage system.
Okay, so it's going to be sanitary wastewater, okay.
Yeah, sanitary wastewater.
All right. And also, in the coastal assessment form, it was filled out that stormwater runoff into coastal waters. There will be best management practices to control stormwater runoff into coastal waters. Just for, for the members, we wanted to know if that would require a swap of stormwater pollution prevention engine plan.
I don't believe it doesn't, I think that, what Michael has just said, that there is a system in place that's going to be employed, once the construction is completed, and the actual stormwater off of the roofs and all is going to be collected and disposed of through a system.
And the extent of disturbances, not such that it requires an SP, SWP, be prepared, as I understand the case.
When we clear or plant, if we clear an area that is larger, I think the limit now is one acre, it used to be five acres, if there's enough stumping in that area that we reach that threshold, we have always opened a split for that action. We have several that are open on the farm, and so that's been our practice to do that, and to follow recommendations for, we self-manage the agriculture, but we do open those documents and pay to keep them open.
Gotcha.
So that is something that we, that we take care of when they are reaching that threshold of disturbance for creating the, and it's required that-
That's good.
Anything else?
Answer, and just one last, just, this is probably very minor. With manure management, will, you will have, like, on some places, they take it out via wheelbarrow, and sort of pile it on some area from the barn, or will it just go right into the spreader?
There's actually an area on the very end of the vision, that we call the people share.
Uh-huh.
Where the cover area will hold the spreader in, so it can be collected from the barns and not be rained on, and we will either spread it directly on the field, or there is on the site a large old handball field, which is a perfect area to, to where a house can be, and a complex that way. So we'll be doing both of those.
That is all from the members from the CAB, from the board. We thank you, and it was an excellent site visit. We thank the cooperation of Mr. DeCola and Guma Holo LLC.
Thank you, Ryan. Other members of the public?
Good evening, my name is Robert Donaldson, I'm a resident of Mill Road. I'm also a member of the Conservation Advisory Board, and I informed Chairman Dowden the previous week that I recused myself from this application process regarding the DeCola Kibble property. Last Thursday and last month, this most recent Monday, I came to the office here and I reviewed the applicant's folder, and I came across the following. Now, in the waterfront consistency review, paragraph three, paragraph B, subsection three, asking for the location of action, the applicant wrote, "Ellersley Road, Morton Road, private." It does not provide a clear indication as to where the entry or egress would be on the property. In the full environmental assessment form, Part 1, project and setting, information provided by the applicant for the project location stated that it was on Ellersley Drive, Rhinebeck, New York. Now, at the town call here, I asked the clerk, you know, to show me on the map where's Ellersley Road or Ellersley Drive, you know, pretty much knowing that they're private roads, and nowhere on the maps in the town here are any of those roads located. Now, based on my understanding of the property, right, coming from the Rhine Cliff area all the way up to the old Morton Road Schoolhouse, there are numerous entrances along Morton Road. There are also two entrances on Mill Road, one of them which is denoted by a private blue sign saying East Gate Drive. My question is, where's Ellersley Drive? On the Dutchess County Land Parcel site, it does show an Ellersley Road on the property, but there is no Ellersley Drive. Now, years ago, when I worked at Holy Cross as a teacher, I did a lot of historical and archaeological work on the property, and I spoke to many of the old timers, the locals, and they always referred to what is now known as the East Gate Drive as the, well, it's Ellersley Drive, the East Gate Drive at Ellersley, you know, and they went back and forth on it. So my question is, right, that I would like some information, where's this Ellersley Drive? Now, there are other questions that I would like the applicant to provide him. He probably did not know that this information was needed for tonight's meeting, and I understand that, and hopefully, at the next public session on this property, that it would be provided, I could respond to it. Since it was not mentioned, I'd like to know where the main entrance and egress will be located on the property for the stable project. Will it be located on Morton Road or on Mill Road? If there will be more than one entry and egress, I'd like to know where they will be located on the property. I'd like to know where the entrance and egress will be for any commercial deliveries for this stable activity program. Now, if any large or special events will take place on the property, I'd like to know at what sites on the property will the visitors, participants use as an entry and egress. I'd like to know how in any manner will any current or future entrances along Mill Road be used for any special events or activities with this project and program. I'd like to know where on the property any parking sections will be located for cars, trucks, and the wagons that will haul the horses to the site. Since there was no map indicating any entrances, egress, or parking areas in the folder, all right, I'd like the applicant to submit a detailed map outlining any of the entrances, egresses, and parking areas on the property that will be used for any and all of the future programs and activities at the site. Thank you.
All right, I think that we've asked Michael to show where the parking is going to be on the map. I think he can probably tell us where Ellersley Road Drive-
It was a mistake on my part. The road is Ellersley Road, it's a 911 road, it's listed as a private road, it's in the Dutchess County, it goes from the entrance to Holy Cross, follows the old road out past the ball field, and comes out at what's now Woodengeate on Morton Road. It's an established road. We changed the name when we bought it from Holy Cross Woodengeate, Ellersley Drive. It's on all site plans for the existing circulation for the, for the, for the school.
And that's the point of ingress and egress to this complex, and that's, I assume, where commercial vehicles would be coming if they're to supply anything, you know, feed, whatever.
The only access, right. The only access intended.
Yeah, right now, there's no, East Gate Drive, it ends at the apartment to an old bridge, there's no way to cross the lake, and we have no intention of rebuilding that bridge to any degree to which we carry traffic.
So the main entrance will be the road we came in when we met with you?
It'll be that, that road comes in, circles down around, and then goes back out to, there's a Woodengeate on Morton Road, that you can drive by and see. It goes by what was the old football field for the-
So it's going to loop around?
Yeah, and it's on, it's on the, in fact, it's on the filed map for the Holy Cross property, at the county.
And for the purpose of this hearing, any, any events, any things like that, basically, are not what's been proposed. It's basically a stable, either for boarding, or for training, something like that, as I understand it. So overflow parking, things like that are not?
You know, I, it's not just being proposed now, I don't know that it's precluded by the local law. It's certainly not, I'm not planning on running his. The stalls, you know, there's 24 horses there. The size of any event would be significant in the body.
Unless, and we did ask if you were anticipating in the future any horse shows that would bring in other horses or bring in observers, and we didn't, you know, you didn't, you didn't know at this point, was what you said.
We're applying for a commercial, like, for agricultural use, certainly that could be a possible use in the future. And that's, it's not our intention to have shows in the future.
No, I know, but it just, it relates to the number of parking spaces available, obviously.
Yeah, you know, there's, I think, you might, little bit of understanding about what's required in those situations. You're not supposed to, you have to show parking for an entire horse show. If you do it in front of the horse shows, there's arrangements that you made of, the parking that we will show will be for the, 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 the -
With one handicapped, for ADA?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well-
Yeah, you've got to have one.
Yeah.
ADA, you're fine.
Yeah, that's what, that's all you have to do, is put up a sign in front of one, that's it.
There is therapeutic right.
Yeah, therapeutic, yeah, therapeutic right, things like that. You never know what you might end up doing there. Other questions from the public? Additional questions from the board? And Art's looking up-
Yeah, I'm just, you used the term, Michael, "commercial equestrian operation." Is that a term that you've taken from Ag and Markets law, or something of that sort? And, and I think the board, yeah, I think, so I'm, so I'm going to say to the board, I think the board needs to take a look at that definition, to see exactly what that encompasses, in terms of this discussion of shows or whatever. And that the proposal, and that the proposal here is, on its surface, it's to use the existing buildings, provide a connecting link, for purposes of stapling an indoor arena, but then it goes on to say for commercial, in the intent here is commercial operation. So in fact, in approving the plan for, the plan as requested, and under the terms requested, you would be encompassing whatever the commercial operation is under Ag and Markets law.
Ag and Markets, I use that term because Ag and Markets recently, I think it was 2000, 2002, found that commercial horse operations are protected under the right of farm law. There was a question about whether or not that was agricultural activity. I'm not using it as a term to define a new kind of level of use of that. I'm just simply saying that what I'm proposing is protecting the right of farm, because it is a commercial operation, and we intend to board and keep horses. It doesn't give us any more power than the right of farm law does, and it is simply a way of saying that we are in a farm district and we're supposed to do agricultural activity.
My thought, my thought on the subject for the, for the planning board, is that it might be better, the planning board moves us to a decision, to deal with the creation of a stall barn and riding arena, for whatever the use is specifically identified as in the zoning law, as opposed to Ag and Markets law. And that use, I think, is, is in a public stable or something of that sort.
Public stable, riding academy?
Yeah, yeah.
Which is defined use number seven.
Yeah.
Let me just see what it says.
It may not be defined, but at least it's a specific use that's identified in the, in the use schedule.
I think it determines that the, that because it's in a farm district, that the Ag and Markets law supersedes that specific-
The Ag and Markets law simply indicates that municipalities cannot enact zoning that is detrimental to farm activities, and if there's any dispute, it's a matter that has to be taken up with the Commissioner of Agriculture. Sharon is absolutely correct. Ag and far, ag mar, ag operations are subject to local zoning requirements. And here we should be dealing with a use that's mentioned in the zoning law. Particularly in that, you know, at this point in time, there's, doesn't seem to be any specific plan for an expanded operation that might be somehow construed to be authorized under the Ag and Markets law, under, as a commercial equestrian operation, be it horse shows or whatever.
I mean, I don't know-
Which, you know, which, which would have, which would have other impacts- Which, you know, which, which would have, which would have other impacts that would have to be considered.
I, I don't think that commercial riding stable and has any specific, um, in zoning, has any specific declarations about horse shows or non-horse shows. I'm not, I'm not trying to.
Horse shows would be an event, and events have to be specifically authorized under the zoning law. The zoning law is clear that if a use is not specifically identified, it's a prohibited use under the zoning law. So what is, what is allowed under the zoning law is a public stable or a riding academy.
Just keep touching it so it doesn't get big.
The conduct of a fair, the conduct of a horse show is, or whatever, is not specifically authorized, and therefore is prohibited.
Okay, what we have here, uh, "commercial horse boarding operations already have access to agricultural district protections and agricultural assessment relief if they consist of at least seven acres, board 10 horses and gross $10,000 above," let me see, choo, 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 okay. "They must also receive $10,000 in gross receipts, any and with fees generated through the provision of commercial equine activities, including but not limited to riding lessons, trail riding activities, or training of horses, or through the production of sale of crops, livestock, livestock products." So those are the things that are mentioned under.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, that's what's allowed under.
That's, that's the use under the zoning law.
Commercial, and that basically does jive with what we have for commercial boarding and stable and training facility.
What you're saying is that horse shows were following the events law of the town, which.
Right.
Have to be 500 of the, 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 the.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying, such things as the conduct of a.
That's the village, I think.
Such, such activities as the conduct of a horse show is not a use that's mentioned in the zoning law, not authorized in the zoning law, and therefore it's a prohibited activity. Now, if one feels that that prohibition under the zoning law is in conflict with the requirements of Ag and Markets Law, it's a matter to be taken up by the Commissioner of Agriculture, who might make a ruling that in some fashion the town zoning law is inconsistent with Ag and Markets.
We're not there.
Yeah, I know, you're not there because, because you're not headed there now.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, you know, it's not an activity you contemplate.
Well, it's an activity that is a possibility with a stall barn and a horse and indoor riding arena. The question of what the threshold is and what constitutes a, an event that would require anything that you're talking about is, would be an ongoing discussion at that time.
That's right, yeah.
That's not what's being proposed here right now.
At this point.
I don't know, I don't know what, yeah.
At this point, what is, what is being proposed is what I just read on the commercial equine. And also, that also fits the definition of our zoning law. So that's, that's what we would stick to, understanding that if it's to go beyond that to events or something like that, then we would, we would have another discussion to see exactly where we go with that. Just so, for the record, so we understand that, that that's what we're approving, so that there's no misunderstanding.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? From the members of the board or questions? Well, I have two resolutions. Yes?
Ready to move in that direction?
I think we are.
I, I don't see, uh, let me just, let me just take a look, based on what I just We wanna, we wanna, we wanna change the word, we wanna strike the, there's a reference in here, again, because I picked up from the application, the "commercial equestrian operation." We wanna strike that particular language and insert the term that's used in the zoning law.
Okay, and that term is slash riding academy?
Public stable slash riding academy as defined as riding academy as set forth in.
He's gonna have to read this one.
In the district schedule of use regulations. And defined within the town zoning law, within, within Town Code Chapter 125.
Okay. Are we looking good?
Yeah, if you insert that, that phrase or those phrases in both resolutions, I think you're okay. You've got to further insert, and I believe we may have done this at the last meeting, indication of who prepared the plans, dating the plans, et cetera, and that's in the second resolution.
Okay. Okay, well, see what you think about this. Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on a proposed action involving the May 2014, and we'll get the date on that, application to the planning board for site plan review and approval by Gummer Hollow LLC, Jamie Keibel, and Michael DeCola under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of proposed renovation and reuse of two existing buildings and the erection of a connecting structure and related site improvements, including SDS to create stall barn and riding arena for a.
Public stable slash riding academy as set forth in the district schedule of regulations and defined within Town Code Chapter 125.
With a 112-acre tax mac parcel on Morton Road at Ellersley Drive being a portion.
And I think we just corrected that to Ellersley Road, is it?
Ellersley Road.
Oh, Ellersley Road. Being a portion of a substantially greater acreage controlled by the applicant, said proposed action being a type-one action under SEAKER involving a proposed use falling within the definition of agriculture as set forth within the New York State Agriculture Markets Law. One, in its role as lead agency under SEAKER, determines upon review of the AF Part 1 and its own completion of the annexed AF Part 2. In consideration of the criteria for determining significance, set forth the Title VI, Part 617.7(c) NYCRR, the historic preservation policies underlying the historic district designation, and the pertinent coastal policy set forth in the town's LWRP, that the proposed action as described in the application will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment unless it is a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, giving an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chairman to so execute the full EAF and directs the planning board clerk to distribute and file the full EAF with negative declaration, annotation, and other documentation as pertinent to a type-one action in the manner set forth within the SEAKER implementing regulations, Title VI, Part 617.12 NYCRR, and in accordance with the format of the updated and recently issued SEAKER form. Three, further severally determines, as otherwise incorporated in the above negative declaration, and with due consideration of comments offered by the town's waterfront advisory committee, the proposed work and intended occupancy to be consistent with pertinent coastal policy set forth within the town's LWRP. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll poll the board. Jesse?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Moving right along.
I have notes here that you want me to number the stalls, show the storage area from the old gym, and show the parking for the.
Users of the, of the, of the facility. I think that summed it up.
Anything else, Michelle?
Well, that's.
I didn't get to that storage.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to the approval resolution yet.
Site plan?
What?
A site plan?
Well, that, it's gonna be an enhanced site plan showing those features and that additional data, so that I can stamp and sign it with confidence. Did I, oh, I did. Okay. Uh, "The Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the May 2014 application for site plan review and approval by Gummer Hollow LLC, Jamie Keibel, and Michael DeCola under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of the proposed renovation and reuse of two existing buildings and the erection of a connecting structure and related site improvements, including SDS to create stall barn and riding arena for a commercial," no, for a.
For a public stable slash riding academy as set forth in the district schedule of regulations and defined within Town Code Chapter 125.
Within a 112-acre parcel on Morton Road at Ellersley Road, being a proposed action subject of a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance under SEAKER with incorporated statement of consistency with the town's LWRP, therefore issued by the planning board. Approves the application for site plan approval, site plan review and approval, including but not limited to a set of project plans B1 through B16 and A1 through A8, prepared by, and dated, we need to just get the name of the prepare and the.
Who's, who's the preparer, who's the, who's the stamper of the drawings?
Um, drawings that are stamped are being stamped by Robert.
Robert Murray.
Okay.
And Steve Bench prepared the application.
Uh, Robert Murray, for purposes, for your purposes?
Yeah.
Robert Murray, P.E., okay, and what date, what where about?
We'll get that. Uh, "Including A2 site plan and an engineering report and accompanying plans entitled Gummer Hollow Horse Stable Subsurface Sewage Disposal System, prepared by Bergman Anthony and revised to 13th, 2014, and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction issued the below conditions and/or requirements in the next six calendar months. One, documentation of design approval by the Dutchess County Health Department for proposed onsite sanitary sewage facilities. Two, submission of site plan drawings and the number and form required within Town Code Chapter 125 zoning."
Stop. Including modifications, including thereon modifications discussed during the public hearing, which is what Michael.
Right. Zoning, or in lesser number as may be deemed acceptable by the chairman, and had consultation with the planning board clerk and the Z.E.L. Oh, I messed up again. Three, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Ryanbeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land. Wait a minute, that's 125, right?
125.
Right, zoning. 125 zoning. In taking this action, the planning board determines the above cited documents to have been adequate for its review and consideration of this application, waives any further data requirement set forth within Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, which might otherwise be construed to alter this matter. Could I hear a motion? What?
Applied to this matter.
Oh, applied to this matter, huh. Put these back on. Uh, could I hear a motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Poll the board. Bob?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. That wasn't so painful.
I have a question for the applicant.
Yes.
How did you get the name Gummer Hollow?
I asked him last month.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I looked at his Gomer.
I asked you last month. Did you ask me to?
How many years ago, 10?
Michael.
Her face is red, so I think.
Who motioned the SEAKER resolution?
SEAKER resolution.
Melody, and Sharon, did you?
Woody, Woody.
No, that was, that was the approval resolution.
I think he did both.
He did both?
Yeah, both times.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Oh, I didn't see you over there, Joan. I was waiting for you in the back.
Can't hear over the fan. Okay. Moving right along. Thanks, Michael. Yes.
LWRP, 30 days from the second of June.
Well, we already approved it. I assume that your discussion up here.
I thought we already had a report.
Yeah. We didn't?
Expedited procedure required under the zoning law.
Were there any questions that you had that were not responded to tonight? After you gave your discussion? Very good. Thank you.
I'm not worried about that.
No.
No.
Thank you. All right, our final public hearing. Eric Wallach, 293 Wurtenberg Road, special use permit and subdivision plat contact, actually, it's just subdivision, isn't it?
Oh, there it is.
All right?
No, nothing.
What?
Nothing, nothing.
No, no, no.
Oh, it's different.
No, it's just, isn't it just subdivision, or is it?
Special use permit for conventional subdivision, yes.
Oh, right.
Yeah, special use permit and subdivision.
But how could you cluster it? It's just, never mind.
Well, that's what, that's what the resolution says that we'll eventually get to.
You're right, never mind, never mind. Okay. Uh, "Special use permit and subdivision plat conduct to combined public hearing and application of special use permit, conventional subdivision under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, and application for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of the proposed re-ation of two single-family residential building lots with access via common driveway improvement from the entirety of a 57.08-acre parcel in the rural countryside RC5 district in unlisted action under SEAKER." Mark.
Okay, Mark Kravinsky representing Eric Wallach. As mentioned in the notice, this is an application for a subdivision and special permit because it's a proposed conventional subdivision for approximately 57 acres of land. Access would be off Wurtenberg Road. There's currently a driveway located on the east side of Wurtenberg Road that will serve as the, as the access for the common drive. Common drive will improve that access in a few locations in order to allow for better access and also to improve the driveway to common drive standards. Once you enter the property, as mentioned in the application, this is a two-lot subdivision, there is currently a house which is being constructed, lot number one, and lot number one is approximately 48-acre size. A building permit application has been submitted and approved by the town of Ryanbeck, and this house is currently under construction. So that fifth, that 48 acres will, will be the land that will be attached to this residence being constructed, which is, which is located right here. And, you know, the parcel configuration is as such. It includes mainly, it's, the property is mainly pasture right now, fields. There are some woods located on the eastern portion of the property with a New York State DEC wetland located in the northeasterly corner. Lot number two, which is a proposed size of a little more than, I would say, 8.8 acres, is located towards the westerly portion of the property and utilizes access to this location, utilizes previous work and driveway and underground utilities that were installed by the previous owner. With regard to location of both house sites here, it's taken to, you know, for preservation of the, of the fields and consideration of the natural features of the property. The application also considers current stormwater management practices. This is such a, you know, a minor disturbance to the land. Total disturbance is less than five acres and under New York State DEC speedy stormwater. All that is required for this particular application is erosion and sediment control. And that has been shown on the, you know, accompanying plans with, with the application. Finally, with regard to onsite water supply and sewage disposal, the, the current house under construction, lot number one, was originally going to utilize a previously approved sewage disposal system, which is now to be located on lot two, and so consequently, a new system has been designed for lot number one, and application will be made to the Dutchess County Department of Health following, you know, preliminary approval by this board. All applications are ready and design has been, has been done for that, for that sewage disposal system.
Uh, I think that notification, the sign's up, and the rest of the notification is okay? All right. Good sign, by the way. Woody and I did the site visit. Woody, if you'd like to report on what we saw?
Beautiful piece of land. It's a, it's a nicely laid out where both house sites are. I think they're both complementary to each other. I think it's a very good approach.
I think to emphasize what, what Mark said, the driveways and the utilities were already installed for both building sites by the previous owner, who I think was gonna put a, or maybe it was this guy was gonna put the house where the one house is going up, and then he was gonna put an accessory dwelling or something possibly over off on that little spur. So all that is in place, it's beautifully sighted, I think the land is very well, is very well situated. It, they, you're not gonna see anything from Wurtenberg Road, it's all over and beyond. No, I, I certainly saw no problems with it. I know Ryan, representing the C.A.B. on the site visit, you want to?
Little board again. Mark Kravinsky actually was very nice. I got lost on my way there, Wurtenberg Road, I can never remember which, it goes higher or lower or anything like that, but anyway, he was very kind, Mark was very kind to take me around, and besides a few trees to be cut, we find no issue with this, and it looks like a great site, and we wish them all the best for building and constructing their two lots.
Thank you. Members of the public? Anything from the board? Yes?
I'm Susan Cher, I own the property, the 2014 apartment. I own the property of the 293 Wurtemberg Road. I'm just not understanding where the site number is.
Go with you. Right, so, and actually I've met you, I met you last year.
Yes.
When I was out there. So, so you know where the foundation is?
Lots of it.
Where that is. There, it's actually a little bit, there's, so that's on that knoll there, and then there's a, you know, then there's kind of, then it drops down, and then there's a, there's a another, the next knoll over to the west, that's where the proposed house site is. That's originally, the original house site that previous owner, DeJian, had for placement in primary residence. And that's it. There's only two, there's only two residences proposed on the entire 57.
Oh, okay. I understand. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else from the board? Well, I believe I have a resolution here.
Two resolutions?
Two resolutions. Okay. "Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows on a proposed action involving the May 2014 applications to the planning board by Eric Wallach for special use permit conventional subdivision under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning and for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of proposed creation of two single-family residential building lots with access via common driveway improvement from the entirety of 57.08 acre parcel at 293 Wurtemberg Road in the rural countryside RC5 district. All is depicted in a four-sheet set of engineering drawings prepared by Mark Argraminsky PE NLS and dated April 23, 2014 and being an unlisted action under SEACER for which coordinated environmental quality review is neither required nor being conducted. One, determines review of the EAF Part 1 and its own completion of the annexed EAF Part 2 in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title VI Part 617.7 C NYCRR that the proposed action as described in the application will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment and thus issues a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, giving an environmental impact statement to not be required and stating such will not be prepared. Two, authorizes the chairman to so execute the full EAF and directs the planning board clerk to distribute and file the full EAF with negative declaration and annotation and other documentation as pertinent to an unlisted action in the manner set forth within the SEACER Implementing Regulations Title VI Part 617.12 NYCRR and in accordance with the format of the updated and recently issued SEACER Form." Could I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Second?
Second.
I will, any discussion before I poll the board? Bob?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody? Jesse?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Moving right along.
Motion to close public hearing.
Oh, good point.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Glad someone got that. Good to see that go by the boards.
Can't move fast once in a while.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Someone wants their dinner. "The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon noticing, posting, and conduct of public hearing, excellent sign, making of required referrals and consideration of input received, hereby access follows on the proposed action involving the May 2014 applications to the planning board by Eric Wallach for special use permit conventional subdivision under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning and for subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land in the matter of proposed creation of two single-family residential building lots with access via common driveway improvement from the entirety of 57.08 acre parcel at 293 Wurtemberg Road in the rural countryside RC5 district. All is depicted in a four-sheet set of engineering drawings prepared by Mark Argraminsky PE NLS and dated April 23, 2014 and being the subject of a negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance heretofore issued by the planning board. One, determines the Eric Wallach minor two-lot conventional subdivision to conform to all pertinent standards for large lot development in the RC5 district and to cause no significant adverse effects on the environment that would be avoided where cluster or some other non-conventional land subdivision technique applied and thus grants the requested special use permit to authorize the proposed conventional subdivision of the subject parcel in the manner depicted. Two, further grants requested subdivision plat approval for the Eric Wallach two, minor two-lot conventional subdivision and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within 180 calendar days of the planning board's adoption of this resolution. One, either documentation of design approval by the Dutchess County Health Department for proposed onsite water supply and sanitary sewage facilities on each of the proposed residential building lots and/or the submission of a letter from a New York State licensed professional engineer stating his opinion based on specifically referenced field investigation that a sanitary disposal system serving not less than a three-bedroom dwelling can be designed and sited on each of the proposed lots in full accordance with the county health department standard. B, submission of a letter from the Town of Rhinebeck Highway Superintendent approving the location and design of the common driveway access intersection at Wurtemberg Road. C, installation of the common driveway improvement in accordance with design approved by the planning board engineer. D, submission for review by the planning board in consultation with the planning board attorney as to sufficiency and subsequent recording in the Dutchess County Clerk's office simultaneously with the filing of the approved subdivision plat draft of a common driveway ownership easement and maintenance agreement. E, submission of subdivision plat drawings in the number and form specified within the Town Code Chapter 101, including thereon all required stamp, seals, and certifications set forth therein. F, stamping of the subdivision plat in the form required above as a non-realty subdivision for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. G, in consideration of the planning board's determination that it would not be appropriate to require the set aside of park land within the Eric Wallach minor two-lot conventional subdivision, payment of a one-mot cash in lieu of land recreation fee to Town of Rhinebeck for deposit in the town's Recreation Trust Fund, this fee being in the amount of $3,000 as set forth in the town's planning and zoning fee schedule. H, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Alrighty, any discussion? Polling the board. Bob?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay.
That's it.
Well, we have, we have one other thing, special core group, but I don't...
Oh, core group, that's right. I'm warranting you.
They're sitting patiently.
There he is.
Warrant back there.
We should have spoken up, we would have left. Okay. Core Group Properties LLC, Mill Road at 3444 Pitcher Lane, site plan. Initial presentation of application for amendment of approved site plan to authorize construction of deck and accessible restroom at special events venue in the ORP district. Planning board review and processing is may be timely under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning and SEACER.
Okay, I think you have a package which includes a larger version of a site plan. This is property probably familiar to you. I think that Dan Rizzo, Luis Rizzo were here over in Centennial as they first sought to get the zoning change to permit that to operate as a barn for events, which I believe required a change in the zoning by the town board. This proposal just deals with the barn and if they, they have some events. And the intent is to not act to increase the footprint, but to put two additions on posts off the building, show up, that's actually in the rendering that you have in color. There is a little shed addition pop out on the south side that will enlarge one, one existing restroom and add another, so there'll be two accessible restrooms for the main floor space. And then on the west side, there will be a deck added that will provide both an out, sort of breakout space in the interior, but also have a second set of stairs down to grade. So both of these additions can stand on posts, so we're not covering any more of the ground, at least with foundation. And in conjunction with this, DF Wheeler engineers has designed and submitted, has negotiated with the health department about an entirely new septic system to remediate whatever was there in the past. And I'm not sure at what stage of approval that is, but I know they've been back and forth a few times. And they've also, I think, addressed the water, the water was interconnected between the buildings in different ways because as you know, it was a, you know, greenhouse and floral sales operation and so forth. And they sorted that out too. So there's a new water line serving the building and a new waste, sanitary disposal system serving the building, and we're just tying into that. But, but this application is specifically to do these two modest additions to the building. The interior square footage is about 96 square feet, we were looking to add, and the outside deck is just under 300 square feet. There's no increase in the number of occupants in the building, will be 75 or less, well under the 100 that would trigger additional code requirements for the building. So that's, that's basically what it's, what we're trying to do here, is we're not increasing the capacity or occupancy, simply better addressing the occupants that will be there with the current use.
As I recall, we had already approved the special use permit and the site plan pending certain things, one of them being the ability to provide the sewage disposal system and the restrooms, permanent restrooms on site. So this is an amendment to our previous approval.
I might disagree with that.
Uh-oh.
And it doesn't, it's just, it's a matter of, I can't call it semantics, it's a matter of procedure. The prior approval, site plan approval, special permit is in place. The prior site plan approval was in October of last year, six months sunset on the satisfaction of the conditions. It's my belief, I think, that those conditions were not fully satisfied within the six-month period. Consequently, this is not an amendment of the approved site plan, but it in fact is an application for site plan approval of a modified site plan. I think it's just a good, you know, just how this has to be characterized.
I don't, I must say, I don't recall if an extension was requested.
Okay. An extension was not requested, and obviously the, you know, the final sign off never occurred.
Right.
So just from procedural standpoint, when you get to the draft procedural resolution, paragraph number one has an either/or, the either was accepts the application for amendment of the site plan approval granted on such and such a date, or the or is accepts the application for site plan approval in the matter, in the matter, in the matter of a modified site plan incorporating the addition of the deck and the restroom superseding the site plan subject to the planning board's resolution of October 21st.
Right, the conditions of approval last time that weren't met, was it getting a resolution with the health department for the SDS?
I believe that was, yeah.
Right.
All of that, and that should have occurred, would have had to occur within six months of October 21st, or an extension would have been requested, and that did not occur either.
And we also didn't have any plans for the actual restrooms at that time.
Yes, right. So, so go with the or and...
I'll go with the or.
Under the net, the application is, doesn't appear to raise any issues. It's a complete application.
Okay. "The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon review by the zoning enforcement officer..." I think I already did sign off on this, didn't I?
Actually, you talked about pending applications or something in your review letter as IGL.
Okay.
And that's what caused me to go back and think about the fact of the conditions.
That is very good of me, wasn't it, to do that?
Well, time flies, you know, six months.
Such foresight.
Seems like yesterday that we did this.
All right, "upon review by the zoning enforcement officer hereby access follows on the June 5, 2014 application by Core Group Properties LLC for site plan approval in the matter of a special event venue, the greenhouse at Rhinebeck, at Mill Road 33, on Mill Road at 3344 Pitcher Lane in the ORP district. Accepts the application for site plan approval in the matter of a modified site plan incorporating the addition of a deck and accessible restroom facility, the mod..." Wait a minute. I want the first one.
No. You want the second?
No, that's right, you correct.
You're right.
Okay. So, the modified site plan superseding the site plan subject to the planning board's resolution of October 21, 2013. Two, classifies the proposed action as an unlisted action under SEACER for which coordinated environmental quality review is neither required nor will be conducted. Two, schedules a public hearing as set forth within the next notice of public hearing on the application for Monday, July 21, 2014 at 6:35. I guess you get the first one.
You could do this on the 14th if you wanted to.
But do we need 30 days though for county and all that crap? I mean, all that stuff?
This is not referral to the county, is it? Is it within 500, about within 500 feet of the...
Do we refer everything to them?
Before you go any further, why is the word Mill Road involved in that? We're not...
Middle Road is the one.
Oh, I think, why don't we just take...
Yeah.
Okay.
Where, where are you?
Right.
Just say 3543.
Oh, middle, middle road. Middle, middle road. Middle road, I'm sorry.
I thought I heard Mill, and I thought I just missed it.
Well, you did hear Mill, because that's what I said. Okay.
When he said, "What's your..." Right.
That's right. Complete ignorance. Okay, schedules a public, a public hearing, so we don't need to wait until the 21st, we could do it on the, do we want to...
Well, hold it, stay with the 21st. What I was originally thinking is that you might not need a meeting on the 21st, but you already have Blackwood scheduled for the 21st, so you definitely will have a meeting on the 21st.
Right. Okay. Schedules of public hearing as set forth within the next notice of public hearing on the application for Monday, July 21, 2014 at, I'm not, I think we already scheduled Blackwood at 6:35?
That's correct.
Do we have anything else that night?
No.
Can we, uh...
What?
Should we do this at 6:30?
6:33.
6:33.
Yeah.
Good talk, Joan.
At 6:33 PM and directs the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 125-77. Delegates planning board members, okay?
I'll go.
I'll go. We did last...
Jesse and Bob?
Yeah, sure.
I'll go then.
Jesse and Bob. We can see if anything's changed. To conduct a field visit and report their observations at the time of public hearing. Five, refers the application to the town conservation advisory board for review and comment. Six, requests further technical review of the application by the town's planning consultant and without prejudice to information that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of the above cited referral and field visit authorizes the planning consultant to prepare working graphs of an EAF Part 2 and 3 as may be necessary SEACER resolution and draft approval resolution for consideration by the planning board when and if timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So we'll see at 6:33?
Michael.
This man.
Yeah. What's that you saw?
Goomer Hollow.
That's where you get ahold of you.
I don't either.
I probably have one.
Okay. We're going to step back for a minute, and could I hear a resolution to close the public hearing on Goomer Hollow?
I don't think we did that, did we, Joni? Did we have a resolution to close the public hearing on Goomer Hollow?
Well, between, between the SEACER and the...
Yeah.
We, we made the SEACER... I think we just went from the SEACER to the, to the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing on Goomer Hollow?
No move.
Sharon, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Let's make a touch, a touch.
Yeah, very good. Okay, I think that's the end of our agenda for this evening.
There it goes.
Woody?
What can we adjourn?
Could I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're good, hang on. If I don't kill that fan tonight.